Tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Burkhart, here by phone.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jim Merdecky?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simontian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
Just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Tara Burkhart, whose daughter is also a Girl Scout, is not feeling well this evening, but she is allowed to join us by telephone. She is on the telephone. She is allowed to cast her vote and participate in the discussion and/or debate per Illinois statute, which means the laws of Illinois. Prior to her casting a vote, she needs to identify herself and then cast her vote accordingly. So, with that, we begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask the Girl Scouts to please lead us in the pledge, and whenever you're all ready, we're gonna follow your lead, okay? Okay, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to our patriots, to our patriots, to our patriots, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Just out of curiosity, who was that deep voice that began that? What was this? That was Alderman Singer. Well, earlier this evening, Alderman Simontian and Alderman Singer got to witness the preamble to the tour with this lovely troupe. How many girls are here tonight, like 6, 700? We had a great time, didn't we? We talked a little bit, we went downstairs, checked out all the cool stuff. You guys had great questions to ask. The one young lady asked me about my hair. Very interesting. I asked a question, what was Geneva called before it was called Geneva? And the answer was? Caneva, that's right. That's one of the young ladies, was it Caneva? We just go through the alphabet and change it up because of pending litigation. It's exciting. It's called what? Again, ladies, on this side of the room to your left, and the ladies on this side of the room immediately in front of you. This is what we call the press corps. Anything and everything you say will be reported in tomorrow's paper. And guess what, you're on TV tonight. The television cameras are behind you, right near the light. And then there's two right over here, ladies. So those of you in the first row, say hello. Our first order of business this evening is to proclaim March the 7th through the 13th, 2016, as Girl Scout Week in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cummings, seconded by Alderman Marks. Any questions or comments from the dais? This is gonna be a tough vote, I can't guarantee passage. Would anyone like to say anything to ensure success? You guys are, I think, a lot smarter than the Boy Scouts, so, ooh, that's on TV, isn't it? Oopsie daisy.
They don't have cookies.
They don't have TVs.
Don't worry about it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? To whom may I present this certificate to? Oh, we have four ladies, oh, excellent. How you doing, ladies?
Good, little one.
Very good, sir.
Oh, I like that. This is exciting. Why don't you stand over here and face the moms and dads and sisters?
Yes, sir.
You face this way. Now, don't get too close, clearly you're afraid. Come on back up here, we'll get a nice photo op. The deal here, this is gonna appear in my obituary. That's a heck of a way to go, isn't it? Tess? You guys do great work. Do you know that?
Yes, sir.
We're grateful for the work you do. Wanna introduce yourselves? This is for you, young lady. It's worth about a buck, you know. What's your name, babe? Lily, and this young lady is?
Haylen.
Haylen?
I'm Barrett.
Barrett? Yeah, sure, what the? Jenna? Great name. Julia, are you in high school? Do you wanna say anything to the council members or to the community? Is that your on TV? Oh, I know you do.
This is weird, but I-
This is the Helen Thomas of the Girl Scouts, she asks like 30 questions. Google that. You wanna say something? The floor is yours.
Okay, so Julia and Jenna are both of my sister's names.
No way.
That is weird.
That is weird.
Ladies, thank you very much. Yes. Of course, all the Girl Scouts.
This is gonna get really crowded. It's crowded.
It is crowded.
I just see there's 15 of these girls.
That's an awesome name.
Thank you.
Is it a family?
Yes.
It's awesome.
B-E-R-I-T, so different.
Brownies and Girl Scouts.
And all like two chasers.
I turn a three, say Samoas. Wow.
They make for the week.
Probably misquoted.
Probably mis-
Checking out of context, misquoted.
Is that the over-under?
Yeah.
Oh, they feel like Justin Bieber.
What'd you do to the Thin Mints? They taste different.
I've been insulted before. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Barrett.
Thank you.
Great, yeah. I am missing a box of Thin Mints.
How many do you have?
No, I'm sharing with the clerk.
Over, more than 10? Under 10?
Under 10. Fewer than? Ladies, you guys are awesome, thank you very, very much. Remember what I said downstairs, so stick around, this is gonna be cool, okay? And then feel free to leave, I'm sure you have homework to do. Good. If you don't want to do your homework, any council member can sign a piece of paper, you don't have to do anything, okay? Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to announce, as all of us know, the official retirement of Police Chief Steve Mexon effective May the 6th of 2016. I would defer to the council for any comments, but Chief Mexon tendered his resignation to the council and myself a few weeks back. It is safe to say that all of us owe him a debt of gratitude. Our deepest thanks, our greatest appreciation, and a huge salute from all of us, not here just at the council, but of course throughout the community. And he will be wrapping up his post here in just a couple months, and we look forward to celebrating that transition with him, so. Item 3C is to appoint Commander Passarelli to become Geneva's next Police Chief effective Monday, May the 9th, 2016. In case you're curious, both Chief Mexon and Chief Passarelli had another thing pop up this evening. I spoke to them prior to the meeting. Commander Passarelli has served the city of Geneva for 22-plus years. He is a resident of Yorkville. He has earned the respect and trust of his colleagues at the Police Department. I believe the admiration and trust of the council and the community, so we look forward to seeing him in that new role as well. I would entertain a motion to so approve the appointment of Commander Passarelli.
Second.
By Alderman Sino, seconded by Alderman Cummings. Any questions or comments? A roll call order would be in vote. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg? Kilburg guy.
Motion passes. All the way back from California, guys. Well-rested. Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, is to announce the retirement of our current city administrator, Mary McKittrick, effective Friday, June the 10th. Again, all of us have had the pleasure of working with Mary for many, many years. I've had the good fortune of working with Mary virtually throughout her career here at the city. She's celebrated just a couple weeks ago 17 years with the city of Geneva. Prior to that, 13 some-odd years in various other roles. And for those of you who may not know, Mary began her tenure in municipal service as an elected official. She saw the light. Mary, do you wanna say anything?
Oh, thank you.
That's why we like Mary. Rebutty is the better part of wisdom.
Now she has nothing to say.
So Mary will be with us, of course, through June the 10th. Later on this evening, you'll see a presentation by Mrs. McKittrick, which represents not only her hard work, but the hard work of all the department heads and all the staff with respect to the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, so we look forward to that. Item 3E is the appointment of Assistant City Administrator Stephanie Dawkins to the position of City Administrator effective June 13th, which is a Monday, 2016. I can't say enough good things about Ms. Dawkins. She has been with us for eight years. I believe I'm quoted in several sources as saying that she has served well as second-in-command or second-chair, if you will, and I believe that she is eminently qualified, as does the council, to succeed Mrs. McKittrick in the role of City Administrator, and we look forward to her doing so on that fateful Monday of June 13th. Her lovely husband Bob is with us tonight as well. Good to see you, Bob. I will entertain a motion to so appoint Ms. Dawkins to the City Administrator role effective Monday, June 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Cummings. Any comments or questions from the dais? Mr. Clerk, a roll call vote.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you, city council. Thank you.
Thank you all.
No, you don't.
Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk can be considered routine by this council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Bruno on item number 5. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Item 5 passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 9A. Consider acceptance of the fiscal year 2016 third quarter goals status report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Singer? Seconded by Sino. A voice vote is sufficient.
A question.
Any questions, yes, Alderman Simontian?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I was reading in here the McGuire, Iglesky, and Associates survey of Geneva's architectural resources. Has that been completed? Do we know? For the Sixth Street School, as a result of the Sixth Street School?
To my knowledge, yes, that was through the county.
Okay.
The demo permit required that.
Can we get a copy of that, is that a possibility?
We can ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
The new trees that they're planting in lieu of the ash trees? Are they ashes again, or are they a different type of tree?
No. They're not ashes.
Okay. Do we know what kind of tree they are?
I know that they're planting oak trees at all the schools. I just saw that.
Oak?
By the Natural Resources Committee today. But not necessarily all the trees that they're planting are oak, but they are planting oaks at the schools.
The variety was chosen based on consultation with the state of Illinois as well with respect to those trees that would survive. I know Mr. Babiga probably has a better field for this than I do, but certain species were selected that could endure and hopefully not be susceptible to diseases that we've experienced.
The city of Geneva participates with the Northern Illinois Tree Consortium, and they establish a list of trees that come out of their various nurseries that they secured contracts with, and they purposely mix up the varieties on an annual basis to limit the likelihood of a single disease eradicating the entire pest. In regards, I can actually get that list out to the city council if you so desire.
I'm just curious if we're going with one type or multiple?
There are at least eight different species of trees. And in regards to the first question, the ash trees can no longer be grown anywhere within the state of Illinois except under Illinois Department of Agriculture regulations for scientific research.
Yes.
Is that, that list is in our city code, is it not?
No, it is not. The city code lists the desirous trees, or highly valuable trees.
Okay.
It lists trees that are prohibited from being planted within the city right away, but it does not have a preferred list.
Okay.
Again, the Tree Consortium purposely generates a variety of trees, both because what's available at the nursery stock as well as to increase the biodiversity within the Parkway tree system.
Thank you.
Anyone else on item 9A? Again, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of approving the third quarter status goals report, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Item 9B is the fiscal year 27 draft budget overview presentation.
So moved.
Well, there's no action necessarily taken tonight, this is just a presentation by Mrs. McKittrick and Ms. Dawkins. They're gonna walk us through approximately 612 pages. We will hit one of the lights here for easier viewing. Oh yes, Ms. Cruz is with us, forgive me, Rita. Wrong one, sorry. All yours, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Chairman, and City Council. Excuse me. This evening, we present an overview of the 38 proposed budgets or funds of the city for fiscal year 2016-17. This includes the Operating General Fund, which is the city's main fund for public services, the Electric Fund, the Water and Wastewater Fund, the related capital budgets, as well as all of the miscellaneous budgets. You will recall that over the past eight years, we've approached our budget development process with different names, including wants versus needs, managing the challenges, good governance, living within our means, fiscal stability, responsible and realistic, and last year's focus on the new normal. Up until two years ago, as you know, the city had essentially put infrastructure projects on hold, deferred expenditures for vehicles, computers, and equipment while reducing staff through attrition. In 2009, we reduced our general fund budget by more than 20% to accommodate the Great Recession. By 2012, we had increased our emergency reserves from 41 days to 95 days. Our policy is to try to achieve a minimum of 90 days or 25% of the operating fund. The general fund balance for the end of the proposed budget, 15, or I'm sorry, 16-17, is projected at $4,025,330, which is 23% or 84 days of the general fund operating budget. It's important to note that a key measure of a city's fiscal health is the proportion of the fund balance relative to the total annual fund or budget. Our general fund balance is a result of being good stewards and fiscally responsible, of adopting and implementing best accounting practices, and ensuring that we serve our citizens with integrity and fiduciary responsibility. Having this fund balance allows us to maintain a good credit rating, continue operations should we have an unexpected emergency or downturn in revenues, and keeps us from having to borrow for day-to-day cash needs. In 2009, Moody's indicated that the city, they were looking at the city and were considering downgrading our credit rating due to the lack of reserves and a high level of debt, combined with uncertainty of the recession, of course. Since that time, we've managed to keep our double-A, two-bond rating, lower our overall debt by 40%, and maintain our reserves at an acceptable level. Simultaneously, we've remained steadfast in maintaining city services and the high level of customer service that our citizens deserve. This is a result of having an outstanding and committed workforce and a community that will work alongside its city government to meet ever-changing challenges. As a result, Geneva remains second to none as an excellent place to live, work, and do business. In fact, the city organization serves as a model of efficiency and best practices that other municipalities emulate. The city's resilient downtown is the envy of the western suburbs. Our citizenry is engaged and passionate about their love of community. In countless ways, we're very fortunate and should be proud of what we've built together. Looking ahead as we begin our new fiscal year, we go forward with a sense of today, tomorrow, and together. Today, we're challenged by unfunded mandates, the threat of longstanding agreements being broken resulting in local funds being taken by the state of Illinois, and increasing demand for more services at reduced costs. Tomorrow is something that the city council continually prepares for. You may be familiar with the adage by Benjamin Franklin, "By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail." However, the long-range goal-setting that you, as city leaders, do in our strategic planning work has received the highest ratings from groups outside of our organization, such as the Government Finance Officers Association, Voorhees Management Consulting, and other cities and villages have used it as a model. Looking ahead to tomorrow is smart and just good plain business sense. Henry Ford said, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." The proposed budget is a business plan that meets the challenges of today and the groundwork to tackle tomorrow by working together to be successful. Tonight, we provide an overview of the 38 proposed budgets of the city. The finance information that we present is analytical, not emotional. It is conservative, yet attempts to advance the strategic goals set by this council. Projections used for revenue streams are not presumptuous, yet incorporate some new perspectives that staff recently discussed with the council. The expenditure standards that were provided to department heads earlier in the year reflect a 0% increase in allowable services and commodities unless essential. As you can see from our budget schedule, the development of this planning document began last November at the Strategic Plan Workshop, when, at that time, prioritized goals were determined by you, the city council. And since that time, we've held approximately 35 budget-related meetings in order to balance the proposed budget that will be coming before you next Monday. Our finance manager, Rita Cruz at this time, will go through some of the funds or individual budgets, and then Stephanie Dawkins will follow up with some human resources information, and then I will be back to wrap it up for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about the fiscal year 16-17 budget. The proposed budget before you is a balanced budget prepared by the city staff. I'd also like to thank city staff, which much of them are behind me, for helping me through this budget process, this first year's budget process from the city of Geneva. There have been some significant changes from last year to this year. As discussed in the meeting last week, we have included the Places for Eating Tax at 2% with an estimated revenue of $300,000. This is a very conservative number because it is a new program and will be needed to be implemented with care. One of the larger, one of the largest increases in the general fund is the Police and Fire Pension Contributions, which increased by 19 and 22% respectively. Also, the way TRICOM pays for administrative services has changed. The auditors suggest that we implement, we implemented this change in fiscal year 2015-16, which is what you see today. Since TRICOM is a separate organization governed by a separate board, the city's services are now accounted for as a professional service, not as an allocation of staff payroll. Therefore, the expense of the general fund is higher but offset by the increased revenue with reimbursed expenditures. Staff is recommending removing the transfer from the general fund to the SSA Number 1, which was $90,000 in the current year, to keep the general fund whole. The budget also contemplates implementing a Hotel Motel Tax Grant Program, which entitles the city, i.e. the chamber, can apply to receive funding that promotes the city's assets. In the Water, Wastewater Fund, additional revenue has been added to start the upgrade to the Water Sewer Plant, which is an unfunded mandate by the EPA. The city will request funding from the Illinois EPA via low-interest Illinois State Revolving Loan Program to be reimbursed as the expenditures happen. This year, for the first year, we have SSA 22, 20, or sorry, 32 on Brentwood's Pond, which was passed by the levy a few months ago. As discussed last week, an increase for the refuge rate from $4.05 to $4.30, which is a 6% increase, has been included in this budget. This slide compares the taxes levied by our neighbors from the north and the south. Currently, St. Charles and Batavia, both homeroom communities, mind you, levy 1% for their sales tax in addition to the state portion. Both of them also levy alcohol and liquor tax of 2%, which you can see on the top table. Both of them also, with an addition of the 2% Places for Eating Tax, we would be more comparable at 2.5% compared to 3.3% of the city of St. Charles and Batavia, which you see on the bottom one, where you can see what the additional 2%. There's the comparison between 2.5 and 3. Highlighting the three big funds, the general fund expenditures for the proposed budget are $17,583,880. For the Electric Fund, it is $45,182, $975, with 2.6 million going to capital. For the Water Wastewater Fund, the total budget is $12,725,300 with 3.1 going to capital. This slide highlights the 38 budgets by fund type. There are some notable differences between the amended, the 2016 amended budget and the 2017 proposed budget. In the Capital Projects Fund type, there is a large decrease in the infrastructure capital projects due to absence of one-time grant funding and donations. That is offset by the use of reserves in the Capital Equipment Fund for the first time since the fund has been created. The decrease in the Internal Service Fund is due to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The fiscal year 2015-16 budget was amended due to claims that we pay by the city, which are paid by the city, that are reimbursed by a reinsurance carrier. Staff does not budget, staff does budget conservatively in this fund due to large swings of claims from year to year. The 7% increase in the Trust Fund, Trust and Agency Funds is due to the current and potential retirements. The amended budget indicates that we will have a surplus of $284,400. And for the 16-17 budget, you see again a balanced budget of $17,583,880. Presented here are all the SSAs by fund in which the city levies for. SSA Number 1 revenues come from the levy for operations and also the levy for the newly refunded SSA Number 1 debt, which was passed a few weeks ago, and will retire in 2022. number one debt, which was passed a few weeks ago, and will retire in 2022. SSA 16, Fisher Farms levy is determined by the homeowners association on an annual basis. The remaining special funds, special revenue funds are listed here. Some notable highlights are the increase in motor fuel tax revenue based upon the IML projections. We see in the graph later showing the current trend. The mental health fund has also been increasing expenditures. The Geneva Mental Health Board has requested that staff allocate all of their reserves, which amounts to an additional $137,575 outside of the normal $155,000, to be used for charitable organizations. The debt service fund has increased by 4% compared to last year. This fund, fund's revenue comes from the property taxes that are levied for it and covers debt service payments pledged by, pledged by any other, I'm sorry, pledged by any payments that are, do not have other revenue sources like electric and, and water. Although the expense, although this, this expense has increased, our total outstanding debt has increased, as Mary had mentioned earlier. The list of enterprise funds here is, is presented, and we will talk about water and electric later. Here's a breakdown of the revenue for the general fund. The top three revenues are sales tax, property tax, and state income tax, which totals 69% of the general fund revenue. The unknown, the unknown for the future is property taxes, as we still have a threat of the property tax freeze coming up in the next two years looming in front of us. This would not affect the current 1617 budget which we are talking about today. This would only affect the future budgets of 17, 18, and 1819. This is a graphical representation of what we talked about earlier with the general fund revenue allocation. Property taxes and sale tax, sales tax makes up 53% of the budget. D5, I'm sorry. This graph represents the past five years of actual property tax revenues received in the general fund. There's a slight increase within, from the past few years, which relates to the low CPI that has been given to us by Illinois State statute for non-homeral communities. This slide should look familiar. We see this every year. Most people don't realize where the property tax goes. As we can see here, currently, it's 8% that comes to the city of Geneva. The remainder goes to other taxing districts with Geneva being, Geneva School District being the largest at 68. Most of the time in the past years, it goes between 7 and 9% is what the city gets. Next is sales tax revenue. Is estimated to increase based upon the city's estimate by $200,000 to $5, to $5 million. The city of Geneva's port, or, this trend has been positive since 2013, 14. Income tax revenue is shared by the state to the municipalities. This revenue has been threatened to be decreased in the past, so we are seeing that this could be possible discussion point later on in the future. The decrease in the fiscal year 1415 is due to the rate, it being, being decreased to the municipalities. So as you see, we have gotten off of that and we're somewhat on a tick on the way up. Personal property tax revenue is shared by the state, is shared by the state to the municipalities as well. The amount decreased in 1415 due to state allocating our funds to the state board superintendent salaries. Motor tax, motor fuel taxes are on the upswing since 201415, with the revenues being flat for the previous three years. With the decrease of fuel for the, in the past few years, using the law of supply and demand, revenues have increased since more gasoline is being consumed. Some of the increases are offset by the higher miles per gallon with newer cars like hybrid vehicles.
Thank you.
EAV, or equalized assessed value, is estimated to, to increase for the second year in a row. All groups of, of property other than the industrial property are set, are looking to go up. Industrial property is only decreasing by 1%, so it is not a lot. A graphical representation of the general fund expenditures are, by department, are on the screen. From public safety, police and fire account for 65% of all expenditures. Within their respective budgets, 19% intent for police and 19% from fire are there to pay for their pensions. The infrastructure capital projects fund is funded by non-homeral sales tax and additional grant money. These projects for the 1617 budget include welcome signage, tree replacement, street improvement program, the downtown pavilion, and stormwater utility engineering. And this is a tentative list as of right now, the street improvement programs that will be happening next year, 1617. Here is the list of general capital projects for the, for 1617. This is funded by a transfer from the general fund to pay for these repairs. So the repairs include city building repairs, station one alerting system, the fleet services repairs, and vehicle, and heavy vehicle repairs. The capital equipment fund this year, since it's been open, is going to be used, this, the revenue, or the, is from the sale of cap, of city assets or surplus. So this year, we have budgeted for three police cars, a fire administrative vehicle, a building vehicle, and a street snowplow. Since we've heard a lot about the general fund, let's turn to the first enterprise fund, which is the electric fund. The largest source of revenue for the electric fund is electric sales, which are 3.0, $39.6 million for the upcoming fiscal year. For the electrical expenses, the largest expense for the fund is the, is purchase power, which totals $31 million, or 69% of their total budget. Electric capital for this year includes the Geneva generation facility upgrades and maintenance, meter replacements, which is also done in the water, in the water wastewater fund as well, overhead underground cable replacement, vehicle replacement in the south side, southeast sub, side substation. Next is the second major enterprise fund, which is the water wastewater fund. For this fund, 67% of the revenues come from the sale of water and sewer. Water and wastewater expenses total $12.7 million in 201617. The largest expenses are capital outlay, outlight at 3.2 million or 25%, depreciation, a non-cash transaction of 20%, and debt service of 2.3 million or 18%. Water capital items include River Lane water replacement, water meter replacement, which I said was shared with the electric fund. They do work together to get that, that process done. Well nine generator, wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which I spoke of earlier with the Illinois EPA loan, membranes for the water plant and the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. And this is a map of the proposed meter changes for the city of Geneva. The green are the dots that have already been replaced. The red are the ones that are going to come up with the during, through the fiscal year, and is estimated that all meters will be replaced by fiscal year 202021. And next, I turn it over to Stephanie Dawkins.
Good evening. So as we know, talking about a budget is difficult if you don't talk about one of the most valued assets of the city, and that's the, your workforce. You're all aware that workforce personnel expenses typically make up a large chunk of the budget, so we, we highlight that a little bit here. We start with our planning for the workforce planning by looking at the strategic plan. Vision five is the vision that is most correlated to this. Within that vision, there are several goals that are directly related to workforce Throughout the, the last five or six years, we've continued to engage expenditure reduction, reduction strategies. We still have the voluntary furlough program. This took off about four years ago, hot and heavy. It's still out there. It is a voluntary program, not mandatory. We still have some people who, who like to have the extra days off, so we have, we've kept it in place because we feel it's a good reduction strategy. We've reduced non-emergency overtime. There's no education reimbursement, and there's limited professional development. Taking a look at our workforce, you'll see over the years, we are actually at fewer, and this is just full-time employees, but fewer full-time employees than we had from 2708 through 2012. I will note that in 2014, we added a communications specialist, so that was the first uptick, and that came out of the staffing analysis that was done. That was one of the recommendations. Last year, we added an electric apprentice, and then this year, we're proposing another electric apprentice. It's important to note that, looking at our demographics, we do have an aging workforce, and there will be some retirements upcoming. And for an electrician lineman, it takes about four years for an apprentice to become a lineman, and even then, it takes a few more years before they're, they're very acclimated. So we're trying to look ahead and plan for the future. So those are the only positions that are, so again, just one position proposed being added this year, which is in the electric division. We've also noticed a change in our workforce over the past few years. In fiscal year 08, 157 of the full-time employees, it was the number we had, and 19% were represented by a union. In this upcoming fiscal year, we'll have 145 full-time employees, and yet 46% of those employees will be represented by union. Another thing we look at is how the funds are allocated, wages are allocated. Rita touched briefly that we used to allocate wages to TRICOM. Now, we no longer do that. Now, we're invoiced, and it's a professional services. But another example is, is a position like Rita, who's the finance manager. Her, her wage is actually allocated among seven different funds or budgets, and that's based on the amount of time that she spends working with those funds and those budgets. But there are about 10 or 12 employees whose wages are allocated across many different funds. We also look at the formal compensation system that the city council adopted several years ago. Each year, we do an annual market study of our, our comparable communities. There's about 25. This year, we had 18 responses, and then every five years, we do a comprehensive study, and this is where we actually look at individual positions. So for the past five years, we've only been looking at overall a market increase. This year, we looked at individuals' positions to see where they fell. We sent out a detailed survey to our comparable communities. We got about a, a 70% return rate, which is not bad, statistically speaking, and this is what we found out. We found out that in those communities, not everybody does a market, not everybody does a merit, some do a combination of both. But in the results that we got, the market adjustment was averaging a 2.38%, a merit adjustment was a 2.43%, and then overall, looking at communities' adjustments, they were looking at a 2.92% increase for next fiscal year. We were, it's, I think, important to note, we were actually using the data to compare the positions from the current fiscal year, but we were looking at what the increases are for next fiscal year. And then what we do is we took the data and looked at our grade, grades of positions, we have several grades of positions, and looked where our positions fall within comparison to the market. I also happened to be at a seminar on Friday, and they were talking about the private sector and about what's going on out in the other world that we don't look at too often, and they were saying that last year in 2015, private sector wages were up 2.5%. For the upcoming year, the electric contract calls for a 2% increase, the street and fleet contract calls for a 2.25% increase, and the police contract calls for a 2.5% increase to their step plan. But if you calculate in the steps, and there's an equity in the top two steps, it actually averages about 4% per employee. The city uses a combination merit-market system. However, in the economic downturn, we kind of did away with the market part, and if you'll recall, we only provided merit increases, so you had to perform in order to get an increase. We're still following some of that plan. If you look here, so we look at external comparability, which is looking at our comp plans and why we did the survey. Once we have that information, we then take and look at our internal comparables. We want to look at positions that are similar, positions that report to other positions, how long an employee has been in a position, and that's where we figure out where we place them within the range. So what is included in this year's budget would be those employees who are below midpoint or at midpoint would be eligible for a market plus a merit, depending upon their evaluation. So they have to meet or exceed expectations to receive any kind of in, increase. If they fail to meet, they would receive zero. If you're at the midpoint, if you're above the midpoint to the maximum, you're, you're eligible for a merit, not a market. And then if you're above the maximum, you just get a lump sum, nothing is added to base. The midpoint of our ranges is what is considered market. So the city's policy has always been that we want to be within 95 and 105% of market, with 100% being market. So when we set our ranges up, we're looking at the midpoint, and we're putting that at 100% of the market. So you would assume a new hire would be making less than market. Someone who's been here a long time would be making probably more than market based on their performance, not based on the market. And then those with like seven to 10 years' experience should fall right about market at the midpoint. So what effect does this have on a budget? Because we're talking dollars and cents. I thought it was a very interesting review this year. As you'll see, the overall impact to all the various funds.